Called the December 7th meeting quasi judicial meeting of the Cary Town Council to order, and at this time I would invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the adoption of the agenda, we have special guests in our audience. We have a Cub Scouts troop. If they would, please stand and be recognized at this time. Two oh two?
Two oh two.
Troop two oh two. Thank you for being here. All right, the first order of business is to adopt the agenda. Please note that items 3.3, modification for Chatham Walk, and 3.4, modification for Williams House relocation, as these items have been handled at staff level and are no longer needed for quasi judicial hearing. Is there a motion to approve the adopted amended, a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And the second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Motion is unanimous. We are now at the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting, item two. The only item on our agenda is the order authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Second, and discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we now move to quasi judicial public hearings. Our first evidentiary hearing is 16 S P zero five five, modification request for Regency Lakeview parking expansion. This case is before us tonight because the applicant has requested a modification to town development standards. As a reminder to those in attendance, even though we are in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. Council members act as judges, and we can only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. The North Carolina and United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing that council must comply with. The Constitution ties our hands on what evidence we can accept. Apologize in advance for what might seem to be a burdensome or a complicated process. We will consider competent material and substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether the development will affect property values, or whether it will increase traffic resulting from this development, will pose danger to public safety, and so on. To those who are with us this evening intending to testify that are not qualified as experts, we can accept testimony from you on factual issues and what you have observed. You cannot express your opinion. Our contractual attorney, who is sitting to my left, who's Ms. Silverstein, will help determine who's an expert and who is not an expert, and what evidence we can consider. The hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who would like to speak during the public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is sitting to my right, and at this time will pause just a moment to allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths, and council will pause from taking any action during this time. and I said the modification request for Regency Lakeview parking expansion was 16 S P oh five five. Instead, the correct site plan number is 16 S P oh eight eight. So at this time, I'll ask council members, starting on my left, if they've had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge to close, or a close relationship with an affected person to disclose, starting with Mr. Yerhoff.
I have not.
Ms. Bush?
I have not.
Ms. France?
No.
I have not. Ms. Smith?
I have not.
Ms. Robinson?
I have not.
Ms. George?
Only a site visit.
Okay. Do you feel that will impact your decision in any way?
No, it don't.
Okay. Based on the disclosures you have heard from council members at the table, I'd invite anyone to the podium at this time if they have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one will continue, and I'll open the quasi judicial hearing, and Desmond Corley of our staff will introduce this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. This case is a modification request to exceed the maximum allowable parking at 9,000 and 11,000 Regency Parkway. The applicant is proposing a net addition of 101 parking spaces. The subject property is within the Regency Park P D D, adjacent to Symphony Lake to the south and Coca Booth Amphitheater on the east. Currently, there are 1,475 parking spaces on site for the two office buildings you can see in this photo. Some of the spaces are used during off, during off hours for events at Coca Booth Amphitheater. And the applicant has provided a tree survey with their development application that shows that there are no champion trees within the proposed development area. Here's a photo of the main building at 11,000 Regency Parkway. Most of the proposed parking will be, from this perspective, will be to the right of this building. I have another photo of the subject property. Most of the parking is going to be in front of this side of the building and to the right. Here is the proposed development in plan view. The existing buildings are shown here in gray. Highlighted are areas one, two, and three where the new parking is proposed. Area one has the bulk of the new parking. Most of that is new construction. Area two is proposing, in addition, a small expansion of three spaces. Area three is another small expansion to an existing area of seven spaces. The applicant is, their proposal represents a 32% increase in the maximum number of allowable parking spaces. Council must approve any modification greater than 30%. At this time, I'll call on Ms. Trejo's, who's representing the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Beth Trejo's. I'm an attorney with Nelson Mullins here tonight on behalf of the Dilwig Companies to request approval of this modification to allow additional parking spaces. We recognize that this is a quasi judicial hearing, and so we have brought with us a team of experts to speak to you about the two required findings of fact in this case. We have engineer Richard Adams with Kimley Horn. We have engineer Corey Howell also with Kimley Horn. We have Mr. Mark Alexander, who is the managing director of the Dilwig Companies. We have Mr. Will Garner, who is the director of construction for the Dilwig Companies. And we have Ms. Laura Chapman, who is the senior property manager for the Dilwig Companies assigned to this particular project. So we have a lot of folks here who are prepared to present evidence to you, but we are going to try to be efficient with your time and limit those to the two that are necessary to meet the required findings of fact. The other folks will be available to you as you have questions. As you heard from staff, this is a request to allow 101 additional parking spaces. There are unique demands on this site, given the proximity of Coca Booth Amphitheater and the shared parking arrangement through the town with Coca Booth. In addition, you will hear that there is a significant change in demand in office parks as compared to when your ordinance was originally approved, and so the demand for parking per square feet, per square foot, has changed significantly. Your staff included in their staff report, a reference to a N A O P study that shows an increase of almost, an increase in demand of almost two to three spaces per thousand square feet, based on the study provided by N A O P. At this particular location, these additional parking spaces will support quality businesses in the town of Cary that provide high paying jobs, including Dude Solutions, H C L, and Global Knowledge. This additional parking is necessary for this building and for the town of Cary to remain competitive. I would like to call as our first witness, Mr. Richard Adams with Kimley Horn, who focuses his practice on parking and transportation. He did a recent study of this site, and will share those details with you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Richard Adams. I'm an engineer with Kimley Horn and Associates. And just by way of background, I do have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from N C State. I also have a Master of Science in Civil Engineering and an M B A from Georgia Tech. I'm a professional engineer registered in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia. Been practicing about 25 years predominantly in transportation and parking. So with that, as Beth mentioned, I've done a study that I'm going to share some facts with you, obviously answer any questions you may have. But it reinforces the study that your staff found, and that Beth mentioned as well, that parking is changing in suburban office, the parking demand. We see parking demand going down for many uses in many locations. Suburban office is exactly the opposite. We're seeing parking increases as the number of people per square foot goes up. So, just a little bit of background there. I think most of you are familiar with the site. We saw the site from your staff report, and the one thing I wanted to mention is that there is, as you'll see in my numbers, there is a difference in parking demand going east to west. The vast majority of the demand is on the east side, which is, as you can see from this aerial, that's where the buildings are. That's also where the Coca Booth Amphitheater is. So we have a particular crunch there in addition to overall very high demand. Just some photos from the site. Some of you may be familiar with this, but because of that particular crunch and the overall parking demand, they've already had to implement enforcement requirements. You can see that they've got stickers required to park in certain places. They've got hang tags for certain spaces. Dude Solutions has reserved spaces. And they have enforcement as well. They have hired private security. That's what the golf cart is, is the security going around enforcing the parking regulations. So, a little bit more about the study we did. We conducted counts on September 19th and 20th on the site for the entire body of parking there. So this includes all of the spaces, including those to the west, which are actually quite a long way from the buildings. And you can see the actual numbers here, the percent occupied, the percent of the total spaces occupied as well. And then you can see also, I counted a lot more hours on September 19th. That was a Coca Booth Amphitheater event, and so we did capture some peak parking, which in the case of that evening was actually during, the peak of that entire day was during the amphitheater event. As you can see, that 1,210 spaces were occupied. The next day, we actually had a slightly higher demand at 11:00 a.m. And so, again, this is the observed parking demand for the two different days, and you will note that a very clear pattern of when people come and go, when the parking demand is over the two days, so very consistent. And as I mentioned, day two was the day we did not count into the evening because there was no event at the amphitheater. So you can see a drop off around, you know, peaking obviously around 11:00 a.m., consistent throughout the day, and then a drop off in the evening, but on the case of the first day, we had the parking come right back and peak even higher during the amphitheater So, this is a little more about what we, what we did after doing the counts. We also, and you may be aware of this from the staff report, but we actually reached out to, and the Dilwig folks did a great job with this, reached out to the major tenants in those buildings to understand their situation, because they knew anecdotally that there was a parking problem here. But they reached out to the, to the users, to the tenants, and asked them specifically, what are your issues, and what might your demand be in addition to what we're seeing out there? Because they have, they have sent employees home, they have asked them to work remotely even when they don't want them working remotely, and they're, so they've got that going on. And they've also literally held off on hiring for this location because of the parking crunch. And so, we asked the client, and the client specifically asked the tenants, put in writing roughly, how many employees are not onsite because of the parking problem? How many employees might you hire if we had more adequate parking here? And so, the three major tenants in those buildings that were mentioned a minute ago all provided, actually four major tenants, all provided that data in a very consistent manner. And so what we did here is we documented what we called the latent demand. Those are the employees that the tenants told us in writing, were not coming to the office because they were asked to work remotely because of the parking problem. And we, we put on here, it's, these numbers are half of what they said. We said, all right, if you say, you know, for the first one, for instance, 32 people are working remotely. We said, well, maybe some of those do want to work remotely. We know that's a trend these days as well. So we took half that. And so the column for latent demand is 50% of what was told, what we were told were people working remotely that might want to come back, or the employers might want them to come back. And then, in addition, they gave us hiring data where they think if they had the room, they would add this many employees to this facility. And so that's the second column where you see potential new employees. And obviously, the sum of those two is what we would expect to be total petition, total additional onsite employees if we had more parking. And then what we did, we also know just from data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, is that not every person equates to a new parking spot. They come at different times of the day. On any given day, people are traveling for work, they're homesick, they're on vacation, et cetera. So you can see the last column is actually a slight reduction on, you know, taking the additional employees and reducing it down to what I T E would tell us are the actual parking spaces required. So with that, and adding all these together, we came up with 556 additional parking space demand on top of what we measured in the field that could be there if more adequate parking were required, or provided, excuse me. And so this table right here just kind of summarizes that for us. And you can see the graph, the black line at the very bottom is the counts that we saw just a minute ago, the observed demand. The next lineup, and it peaks again, and this is an average of the two days where we had both counts. As you can see, it peaks at roughly 11:00 a.m. That was 1,219 spaces occupied. The next lineup adds in the latent demand, those people who were working remotely that would want to come back to the office. And then the green line way up there includes the new hires. So that is our total projected demand across the day, and that line peaks at about 1,775. And again, that's at 11:00 in the morning. And so that's the demand side. And then the supply, the actual current available parking supply is the gray line, the kind of heavy gray line. And then, another thing I should mention is that we don't want to just provide exactly the number of parking spaces that are demanded, because especially when you're talking about over 1,000 spaces. If there's one space available and you're looking through 1,000, it's going to take you a long time to find it. So we typically say you want about 90% occupancy as your maximum occupancy. So if you simply take that gray line, divide by point nine, excuse me, actually multiply by point nine, you get the yellow line across there, and that would be the effective capacity of the existing parking. So compare that green, you know, potential demand to the yellow effective capacity, we're pretty far off. And if you take the, so if you take that 1,775, again, you divide by point nine to get enough spaces so that we have that buffer for effective capacity. That's the red line across the top, which is 1,972 spaces. So, and, you know, with all this data, we expect that there could be a demand of 1,972 spaces, and we have well under that. So that's the, you know, that's the in excess of 500 spaces that our study shows could be demanded here. So with that, we find that the 101 spaces they proposed to build, again, probably as a first step, as you can see by my numbers, they may need more than that, but we feel like this is, it's warranted, it's an appropriate first step to try to meet some of that demand. And so it's my professional opinion that the request for 101 new spaces is warranted and justified, and I am happy to answer questions as needed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would call Corey Howell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Corey Howell. I'm a civil engineer with Kimley Horn and Associates. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, South Carolina, and Florida. I've been in practice since graduating from Rose Hallman Institute of Technology for approximately 13 years. So I just want to take a couple minutes to address some of the site development aspects of our application and outline how we are consistent with the goals and purposes of the town of Cary's land development ordinance. Excuse me. First of all, with section, L D O section 1 dot 3 dot 10, which is related to conserving the value of buildings and land, based on my review of our application and the plans that we've prepared, I believe that we are consistent with those goals and purposes. For L D O section 7 dot 8 dot 1, which is related to ensuring the proper and uniform development of parking areas, based on my review, I believe that our application and the plans that we've prepared are consistent with those goals and purposes. And lastly, L D O section 7 dot 1 dot 1, which is related, related to preserving and protecting the character of Cary, and also enhancing the business and economy, I believe that the application that's before you is consistent with those goals and purposes of that section. And lastly, it was noted in the staff report, I just wanted to highlight it, that the Cary Community Plan Work Policy 3 encourages the retention and growth of businesses throughout Cary, and I believe that our application is consistent with that, and I agree with that assessment. So in summary, it's my professional opinion that the proposed parking increase that is before you advances the goals and ordinances of the land development ordinance of the town of Cary, and I also concur with Mr. Adams in the testimony that he just provided related to that parking increase. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would note that is highlighted in the staff report, that you have previously approved similar parking increases for other projects in this area, including Regency Woods, and we would submit to you that this case is no different than those cases where you have, three cases where you have taken similar action. Given the expert testimony that you have heard tonight, we believe that we have met our burden of proof relative to the two required findings of fact. We do have our other experts available as a resource to you. We would ask that we be given an opportunity to provide evidence in rebuttal if needed, and we would ask for your support of the proposed modification, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I'll invite other speakers who have been sworn in, wish to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. Anyone else moving on? Any party believe, does any party to this matter wish to cross examine? Nope? Okay. We'll now open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. As a reminder to those testifying, please limit your testimony to facts that you know. The applicant's representative has a right to object to your testimony, and she may object while you're speaking. They have the right to do that. Our contractual attorney sitting beside me, to my left, may help the council determine what evidence we may consider. Anyone to speak in opposition? All righty. Turn it over to staff.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. As was mentioned during the applicant's presentation, there are two criteria, two questions that council considers when approving parking maximum modifications. The first is, does this increase advance the goals and purposes of the L D O? The other is more technical. Is the increase justified by the demand for parking, the number of people per square feet, and the time of day that generates the most trips? So these are the two criteria that we evaluated the applicant's justification against. Just a few key observations to pull out. The L D O currently allows a ratio of 3.3 spaces per 1,000 square feet. This ratio is the way that most developers express parking demand, and so I just wanted to show you what it looks like, what it looked like from the application perspective. So we, the L D O requires a ratio of 3.3 for this particular site. We, as a staff, would be able to approve an increase ratio up to 4.3, and that is just below that 30% threshold, where now they have to come and ask you for permission, and they are proposing a ratio of 4.4. Oops, I'm sorry. As was mentioned by the applicant, the town did recently approve three within the last year, three similarly situated office expansions or parking expansions that exceeded the maximum allowance. Those three examples provided in the staff report were Regency Woods 2, Weston Lakeview 3, which is on the MetLife campus, and then Center Green Building 3, which is also in Weston. The staff has observed a trend of large office buildings making similar requests. We're looking at studying the parking regulations, as you might recall from your Q1 meeting. And then this was also mentioned by the applicant. Work Policy 3 in the Cary Community Plan does encourage the retention and growth of existing Cary businesses. The first criteria that I showed you say that council must consider whether the, whether their request advances the goals and purposes of the L D O, and one of those purposes is to implement the Cary Community Plan. At this time, I will take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask council members or either party if they believe any evidence has been submitted that would require a continuance of this hearing. I don't think there's any, but, okay. We'll continue on and open the deliberative phase of the hearing, and open up to council members for questions, comments. I have a couple of questions, and they're more curiosity than anything. Talking about measuring September 18th and 19th, the extra traffic due to Coca Booth event, some events there draw capacity crowds, like a couple of weeks later, you had De Valle that really packed the place with like 14,000 people. I'm just curious what event that was on September 18th and 19th, if anybody knows? And if it's more like a couple thousand people, or if it was a capacity crowd, or what? Just curious.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I actually don't remember. It was an event that had several nights running, but I don't remember exactly what it was.
Okay.
I do think it was, it was pretty well.
Several nights running.
School of Rock.
School of Rock.
Okay.
I think we were in Canada at that time, so.
Oh, that's why I don't remember it, I guess.
That was there.
That's what it was.
Because you guys would definitely be there.
That's right.
I would have been.
One more parking space.
That's right, exactly.
And then my other curiosity question, I think I know the answer to this, but I just, like I said, I'm curious. These are old buildings, older buildings. So am I to understand that in the older buildings, the tenants are using more of the square footage more densely inside? So if there are cubicles, the cubicles are smaller and more dense, so therefore they have more people? Is that what we're seeing? Is that the trend we're talking about that staff's going to investigate? Or what are we, what are we talking about there? Why is this happening? I mean, I understand there's more people. I just want to know why there's more people.
So I wouldn't be able to speak specifically to this, these particular.
And I'm talking in generalities.
Yes, that trend to provide smaller spaces for people in these office settings is why we are looking at what kind of parking is being demanded by office uses.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. The staff report said that this will be, 101 spaces would be about 32,000 square feet. one spaces would be about thirty-two thousand square feet more of impervious surface. It also mentions something about that the storm water, current storm water mitigation can handle that. What, what can that current storm water handle? How many, because they, it sounds like they want eventually, or will need, five hundred and fifty-six spaces.
I, I'll just go ahead and say, and I see Billy coming up here to speak to the storm water. I think the staff report says that there is a storm water management device shown on the development plan. And currently, in the review cycle, there aren't any, there aren't any comments that say, you know, you need to provide more. But I did, I'll let some of our engineering professionals speak.
Excuse me, can you ask that question once again?
Interested in the impact with, of the hundred and one additional spaces in storm water?
There is additional impact. They are adding storm water management. They're adding a dry detention area. So that will take care of the peak continuation, and then the lake itself takes care of all the water quality requirements.
So it will handle, that's outside of this approval process, or is that part of a site?
It's part of the site plan approval, yes.
And will it handle the, what they may need eventually, the five hundred and fifty-six? Or do each of those come in its?
It'll come in separately. This just will handle what they're proposing for now.
And were there any other mitigations proposed, like additional green infrastructure, any other conditions to?
Just, just the dried detention area. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? If there are no other questions, we can close the public comment and get to the motions. Any objection to that?
Nope.
All right. We'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and I'll ask council for a motion on the request of modification.
I'll make a motion. For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve, this is A, to exceed the parking maximum by thirty-two percent. We approve the modification request made by the applicant, as the request meets all of the approved criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Just a.
Go, go ahead.
Just a comments. I think the applicant's done a good job of demonstrating the need. This is not the first time we've seen this request for suburban type office. Quite frankly, I think it's a great problem to have in town. You've got a, some offices and companies that are growing and being successful, and they have more employees, and therefore more of a demand for parking. If they hadn't have exceeded the ratio by point one, this would have been a staff level approval. So to me, it makes sense. I think they've done a good job of demonstrating the need, and look forward to seeing what they propose in the future for even additional parking.
I, I agree, Don. And I, I, by my calculation, and my math may be off, that point one amounts to just twenty-four spaces. So seventy-seven would have been, you know, staff level. By my math.
We trust you.
But verify.
Any other questions, any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Silverstein, if everything's in order, I'll close the public hearing. All right. We'll close this public hearing. Thank you. And we'll now move to our second evidentiary hearing. 323 West Chatham Street. This is eighteen DP zero two zero one. The case is before us this evening because the applicant has requested a modification to the town development standards. As a reminder to those in attendance, even though we are in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. Council acts as a judge and can only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. The North Carolina United States Constitution gives the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing that council must comply with. Constitution ties our hands on what evidence we may accept. I apologize in advance for what might seem a burdensome or a complicated process. We'll consider competent, material, and substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept evidence from expert witnesses regarding whether this testimony, whether this development will affect property values, and whether it will increase traffic and resulting from this development will pose danger to public safety. Those who are with us this evening intending to testify that is, that are not experts, we can only accept factual information from you, what you have observed, and our contractual attorney who's on my left will help us determine who's an expert and who is not. The hearing procedures and detailed rules are on the printed agenda. All speakers wishing to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath to Mrs. Johnson to my right, who is waiting patiently for me to finish. And we will pause at this time to allow those individuals to take an oath, and we will, will continue once you're finished. Thank you. Just like trying to skip as much as I could. Just say the same stuff I said the first time. To learn to speak shorthand. Okay, starting on my right this time, I'm going to ask, ask council members if they had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationship, specialized knowledge to, or close relationship with an affected person to disclose with, Mr. George?
I have not.
Ms. Robinson?
I do not.
Mr. Smith? I have not. Mr. France?
I'm very familiar with this site. It's actually almost across the street from one of my properties, and I drive by it every day. Can stand in my parking lot and see it.
Do you think it will impact your decision in any way?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Bush?
I have not.
Mr. Yurha?
I have not.
All right, very good. Based on the disclosures you've heard from council members, I'll invite anyone at this time to approach if they have an objection to council members' participation in this hearing. Seeing none, we'll continue and open the quasi-judicial public hearing. Rob Wilson of our staff will introduce the hearing.
Good evening, council. This next item involves a modification request for a development plan associated with the property that is located at 323 West Chatham Street. The site consists of point one four acres. The development plan has been submitted for a change of use, with the proposal being to change an existing house to a commercial use. There are no changes proposed to the existing, existing structure or the site. The requested modifications associated with this development plan include a reduction in parking and relief from requirements to dedicate public right-of-way along both of the site's street frontages. At this time, I would like to introduce our downtown manager, Ted Boyd, who will provide some context regarding the site.
Good evening, council. I want to just talk a little bit about what's going on in downtown in relation to this particular site. It is part of the Central Chatham Street subarea of the special planning area. And when you think about, which is really called out in Imagine Cary, that our Chatham Street is to be our main street. You can see the star there, which is a subject property. And it's about a mile within Roundabout to Roundabout, which is also located in our downtown business improvement district. I often use this to demonstrate the development that's happening. You can see the star. And these shaded rectangles give you a sense of, these are all developments that are happening in and around, or recently happened in our downtown area. And the changes, as we zoom in a little bit within this area, are really infill development or repurposing buildings, so very similar pieces. We've got the little farm, which is the old Winn-Dixie building, and we can see the improvements that have been made within here, and will continue to be made. Next to that, the Financial Risk Group has taken the old lighting building, and they're working to make improvements within that existing structure, still under construction. And then some are just complete start-overs. So tear down and rebuild, and we have that, and almost to open Annalor's German Bakery. And so we see a lot of what's being happened is following the vision of what we see in our Imagine Cary Community Plan, and we'll be working and actively working so those tools that we have to be able to make, or we ensure that will, will continue. With that, I'll turn it back over to Rob.
Thank you, Ted. As previously indicated, this site is a single lot. It's located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Dixon Avenue and West Chatham Street. The site is currently occupied by a two-story residential dwelling unit with a driveway and parking area in the rear yard. The applicant is proposing to convert the structure from residential to commercial use. The site is zoned Town Center Mixed Use District, or MXD for short. Commercial uses are permitted by right in the zoning district. The proposed change of use does require the administrative approval of a development plan by staff. Since the application only involves a change of use, though, and there are no physical changes to the structure or the site that are being proposed, many of the normal ordinance requirements, such as the construction of road improvements, do not apply. In this case, though, the provision of parking spaces and the dedication of right-of-way are required, which brings us to the modifications that are being requested by the applicant. The first request is a reduction of the onsite parking from six spaces, as required by the Land Development Ordinance, to four spaces. This is the existing area in the rear yard behind the structure. And as noted, a total of six spaces are required. The applicant is proposing to delineate four spaces in this existing area, and is requesting to be relieved of the requirement to provide the other two. The amount of this reduction, thirty-three percent, exceeds the amount that can be approved administratively by staff. However, the council does have the ability to approve such a reduction. Second requested modification has to do with the elimination of the required right-of-way dedication on West Chatham Street. We do not currently have accurate survey information regarding exactly where the right-of-way is located along the site's West Chatham Street frontage. We're working as part of the development plan review process to obtain that information. However, our records do lead us to think that the required amount of right-of-way per the town's approved roadway widths map has already been dedicated. Nonetheless, in the event that it is determined as part of the development plan review process that additional right-of-way needs to be dedicated, the applicant is proactively asking for council approval to be relieved of this requirement. If you decline this request, then any additional right-of-way that is needed would be required to be dedicated as part of the approved plan. The third modification before you this evening is the elimination of the required right-of-way dedication on South Dixon Street. We do not currently have accurate survey information regarding exactly where the right-of-way is located along the site's South Dixon Avenue frontage either. However, our records, our records lead us to anticipate that a total of nine to squel, nine to twelve feet of additional right-of-way would need to be dedicated per the town's approved roadway widths map. This is a good time to note that it is the town's policy to not ask for right-of-way dedication beneath existing structures, so any such requirement would be modified to stop approximately one foot short of the foundation. The applicant is asking for council's approval to be relieved of this requirement. If you decline this request, then the additional right-of-way that is needed would be required to be dedicated as part of the approved plan. At this time, I'll turn things over to the applicant for their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me tonight is Mr. Daniel Woods of Peak Engineering, who's provided engineering associated with this plan. This is either one of my favorite cases or least favorite cases, depending upon how you want to look at it. If there's a way to go to forty-nine, how do you get to slide forty-nine? Ah ha. There's this cute little house on Dixon Avenue at Chatham Street. There was a resident, it was used for residential purposes at some point. Somebody wants to go in, and instead of live in it, sell things, convert it to a commercial use. Seems like it should be the simplest thing in the world. Just go in, start selling things. It's on Chatham Street. It's downtown. It's between the roundabouts and the downtown overlay. Should be the simplest thing in the world. Unfortunately, we're changing the use. By changing the use, a development plan approval is required. And that's a site plan. In order to have a site plan approved, you have to comply with the site plan standards, which leads us into a whole host of requirements associated with the ordinance, because the ordinance just isn't designed for kind of repurposing existing structures. Now, the ordinance does have a provision associated with repurposing existing structures, which we're using, but even still, there are requirements associated with that particular provision that make doing what we're doing in an area like this not as easy as you would otherwise hope it would be. But from a big picture standpoint, we believe that, you know, repurposing this facility, having minimal impact to the site, which is what the development plan is seeking to do, and allowing it to be used for a commercial purpose, which it's zoned for, is, is the right solution under the circumstances. And you'll hear from, from Mr. Woods as to how we satisfy the ordinance requirements for it. As, as Rob alluded to, we have essentially three requests for modifications associated with this plan. One relates to parking, and the two others relate to right-of-way dedication with respect to the parking. Again, the, the intent of the owners is to, to have as minimal impact on the site as is possible. We, we believe four parking spaces is adequate for this purpose. This is in a walkable environment. Again, it's in the downtown area. We believe that four spaces is going to be adequate with the inclusion of the handicap parking space that will be provided and will be paved as part of the plan approval. With respect to the right-of-way dedication, and you'll hear from, from Daniel as to how we believe the not requiring it is consistent with the ordinance requirements. Again, from my perspective, two, two things. One, minimal impact as possible is what we're looking to do. But two, if right-of-way is going to be dedicated as, as part of this site, we believe that it's more appropriate to do it when and if this site redevelops for something else. That as long as there is a, a single structure located on the site, that it, that the ordinance should operate in a way that allows it to be repurposed in as minimally impactful fashion as possible. And that if there's right-of-way dedication to occur at some point, it's more appropriate if and when this site redevelops for something different than is there. And so with that, that's kind of my big picture perspective on the requests. And I'll hand it off to Mr. Woods, who will walk through the finer details associated with code compliance.
Thank you, council members. My name is Daniel Woods. I'm a professional engineer with Peak Engineering, licensed in the state of North Carolina, and I've been a professional engineer on the site development side for approximately fifteen years. I have been associated with this project from the site side, as working with staff, trying to get it to this process, determine what items we can work with through staff to address, to meet the LDO. Like Jason was saying, he's correct in saying that the owner is just trying to, we're just trying to change the use of the building. We're not trying to make any changes to the area of the site. We want to keep it as minimal impact as possible. So the first modification, as he talked about, was having it to reduce the parking. Right now, there is very limited space with the location of the structure and the size of the property, so we really don't have the ability to expand out the parking and make any parking available beyond what we already have. Okay, we got. So the parking is located at the back of the building, right in here. So you can see that with the location of the structure and the parking's already kind of expanded out as far as it can towards the south, to the back of the property, and to the east and west of the property. So it's really filled in as much as the room we have available to create more parking spaces. As mentioned before, and you know that there has been discussions about the town's requirements and how that the current requirements might be a little, I guess, over-parking. So we're also considering that as showing that this site might, does not have the same level of parking that might be required per the, the UDO. This will be a small-scale shop, generating very little traffic. It is located in the Town Center District, so it's going to also be expected to have people coming from, who's already parked in other areas, coming downtown to visit, or also associated with access from a bus stop at the intersection itself. Finally, it's important to note that there is not space, as I mentioned, for additional parking. So we are trying to accommodate what we can and a change within the existing use. Without moving the house, it is not possible to add additional spaces to the existing parking area. The next item we would discuss was the right-of-way along Dixon. Right along this area right here is Dixon Avenue to the side of the house. We are requesting full relief from the right-of-way dedication of approximately nine to twelve feet. The County Cary's transportation plan is called for a fifty-foot right-of-way for the ultimate section along Dixon. But realistically, it seems unlikely that Dixon will ever be widened due to the existing structure, such as this one's and other ones along Dixon Avenue itself. As Jason, Mr. Barron suggested, that any right-of-way dedication would be most appropriate with redevelopment in the future. There is some concern, as mentioned, that by dedicating to that full fifty-foot right-of-way width, it would potentially place that right-of-way on or within the structure, so to say, which is something that we would not want to, would not be a good thing to have. And by permitting this reduction, the plan will advance the purposes and the goals of the LDO, preserving the residential character of this area, and conserving the values and structures located on the site. Further, it will also result in less visual impacts because it provides appropriate setbacks for the structure from the street. Regarding right-of-way along Chatham Street, again, we are asking for a full relief. Regarding right-of-way along Chatham Street, again, we are asking for a full relief from the right-of-way dedication. Chatham Street's right here to the north of the building, the structure. The request stems from uncertainty as to the amount of additional right-of-way, if any, that would be needed. As noted, we have found some discrepancies between the recorded Ds and surveys that have led to some uncertainty about what the right-of-way actually is in front here. However, we feel fairly confident it is unlikely that any would be necessary, but that does need some final confirmation and determination. We are working to get this figured out, but feel that it would be best resolved with staff once we get that finalized. We not want to dedicate any right-of-way either that could potentially encroach into something on-site that could create a conflict, requiring potential other issues. If additional right-of-way is needed on Chatham, we prefer to work with staff. By permitting this reduction, the plan will advance the purposes and goals of the LDO, preserving the residential character of this area and conserving the value and structure located on the site. Further, this modification will result in less visual impacts because it will provide appropriate setbacks for the structure from the street, as with Dixon Avenue. It's my professional opinion that the requested modifications are reasonable to meet the spirit and intent of the LDO. These modifications are sought primarily in an attempt to preserve the site as to the fullest extent possible while accommodating a new use. By approving these modifications, the town will allow the residential structure along Chatham Street to be used for commercial purposes, that serves equal goals of preserving existing structures, while at the same time permitting commercial uses within the Chatham Street corridor and keeping with the town's plan for the same. Thus, in my professional opinion and for the reasons I stated earlier, the requests for modifications are justified. I'm available to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. At this time, Mr. Mayor, I enter into evidence copies of the staff report and the attachments associated therewith. Also ask the council to take judicial notice of the contents of the town's land development ordinance and other adopted plans. As Mr. Woods indicated, we've satisfied our evidentiary burden for approval of the modifications that have been requested in this case. And again, from a big-picture standpoint, this just seems like the right thing to do, breathing commercial use into a residential structure and providing for as minimal impact as possible to the site. We, we are here to ask, to answer any questions that you all may have, and we respectfully request you all's support and approval of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. This time, we'll call on those who have been sworn in, wish speak in support of the application to approach. Anyone to speak in support? I see no one. Any reason to, any reason to cross-examine? No, we'll continue to move, and we'll open the hearing open to those who are opposed to the requests. As a reminder, please limit your testimony to facts that you know, and the applicant's attorney has a right to object. Anyone to object or oppose? Seeing no one, we'll continue and ask staff to present their professional observations.
The staff's observations regarding the three requested modifications are largely a restatement of the information that we've already shared. As it relates to the requested reduction in parking, the council does have the ability to approve up to a fifty percent reduction in the town center, which is more than in other areas of town. The town staff is preparing an amendment to the land development ordinance that would potentially reduce and/or eliminate parking requirements for this particular zoning district in the town center. As far as the elimination of the right-of-way request, we don't really have any additional observations to share. I believe that those have been explained in, in detail. As far as the approval criteria for the requested modifications that are before the council this evening, you may approve a parking reduction upon finding that such reduced number advances the goals and purposes of the land development ordinance and community plan, and that the provided spaces will be sufficient to satisfy the expected demand for parking based on the following criteria: the nature of the use, the number of trips generated, the times of day when the use generates the most trips, the presence of other establishments on the site that could influence parking demand, and the availability of nearby on-street and/or public parking. The approval criteria for the requested right-of-way, the relief from the right-of-way dedication would be that it advances the goals and purposes of this ordinance, and either results in less visual impact, or more effective environmental or open space preservation, or relieves practical difficulties in developing a site. I'm available to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any reason to cross-examine, or are I keep moving? We now open the deliberative phase of the hearing. Open it up to council members for questions or comments. I'll start. The applicant made a real good point. Why, I'm curious, the pros and cons, or mostly the cons, of why we're requiring right-of-way dedication for repurposing. You know, why would we do that since, like you said, when they redevelop, that's when you want to? So give me a reason why. I can't figure out why you do that.
It's what the ordinance says.
No, I have, so if you don't have them, I have them.
The development ordinance, there are kind of eight general categories that apply to development plans, and in a case like this where it's just a change of use, all of them fall away except for the dedication of right-of-way. And the, the thought is that that is, there's no physical construction of road improvements that might be required with a more intense proposal. The thought is something is changing, though, and it's an appropriate time to get the dedication of right-of-way without other required improvements. So it's, I think, for the council to consider is the, you know, is this commensurate with what's being suggested, you know, as you contemplate what relief to provide.
You want to add to that?
Yeah, I would like to. Let me ask you a question. If we received the dedication of that right-of-way and at some point in the future a sidewalk wanted to go in there, needed to go in there, we would then not have to purchase right-of-way for the sidewalk, correct?
That's correct.
So that's the perfect reason. And it's not just this site, it's all sites, especially in downtown where we're trying to promote walkability. So you have, you'll say this house and the next house and the house behind that all become commercial properties, and you have more people meandering down here, and we want to have walkability. We might want to put a sidewalk in, and if we decide that, now we have to go back to the owner of the property and ask them for the right-of-way and have to pay for it. So why not just acquire it now? We're not going to threaten them, we're not going to, the likelihood of us expanding the road is very low. The likelihood that we would put a road within a foot of their property is even lower. So, I mean, we've, have a, a history of having respect for our property owners. So I think really it's about having the land available if we need to have a sidewalk. Or, you know, some other, I don't know what would happen on West Chatham Street, but I doubt there's anything extra that has to be dedicated there. But why not have this, this applicant, who is participating in the benefits of being in downtown, also contribute to the success of our downtown? So that is why I think the right-of-way should be dedicated, and the parking spots I'm totally fine with. I think that's good. I think if it's not enough parking, the business itself will be the one to suffer more so than the surrounding area.
Okay. Other comments, thoughts?
I just want to ask a question. If we didn't do it, right, and the site redeveloped, would the fact that we didn't promote right-of-way earlier mean that the new redevelopment would also not be, be forced to provide the right-of-way? Or is that a different process?
That would be a completely independent process. And assuming that that proposal was more intense, it would likely trigger the other requirements that are not applicable in this case, one of which would be the dedication of right-of-way and potentially the construction of any necessary improvements as well.
Okay. I just wanted to know if it followed with the land or followed with a previous one?
This decision would be independent of future development proposals.
Does the dedication of right-of-way cost the applicant any money?
That was my question.
There would be the cost of preparing a plat to dedicate that right-of-way. There may be, we're going to need additional surveying work to confirm there's some discrepancies between the deeds and the information that we have. So there is some cost in, in terms of consultants, professionals to help prepare that, but other than that, no, there is no additional cost.
Okay.
Can you tell me how much distance is in between the curb and the side of, or the steps on the side of the house right now? How many feet would that be?
From West Chatham or from South Dixon?
Dixon.
South Dixon.
Do you have that information to share?
Five.
I'm going to let the...
My question is basically, I don't even think there's enough room to put a sidewalk there if you wanted to right now with the house.
Are you referring to this area right here?
Yes.
Correct. There's about, from this little step right here, there's maybe three to four feet the curb, and then from the structure, six to seven feet, I believe.
Yeah, this section, this section of South Dixon, which I wholeheartedly agree with your comments regarding acquiring right-of-ways, making it walkable, building sidewalks and stuff, totally agree with what you're saying. On this particular site, it's not practical because there, there's not enough room to put a sidewalk there. Right across the street on the other side that's actually vacant, that is going to develop, that's the side of the street right now to put a sidewalk on. When this does redevelop, then in the future, we could acquire the right-of-way and then get a sidewalk on that side of the street if you wanted to. The intersection is currently signalized, so it's protected, so if you had a sidewalk on the other side of the street, you could safely cross and keep traversing down Chatham Street.
Excuse me, Mr. France, if I may intercept, we are proposing a more narrow sidewalk, a four-foot sidewalk right here along the building for handicap accessibility. So we will be putting a sidewalk in of some sort.
Okay.
Just not your typical street cross.
Changes everything.
Well, it does, it really does, because I think four-foot wide sidewalk right up against the curb is, is wide enough. It's not ideal, but it is wide enough to have a real sidewalk.
If you can get a four-foot sidewalk in, then I, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so that really supports my thought that we should go ahead and, and have them dedicate the right-of-way, because they're going to put it for this little sec, section here, but that last little bit, if we wanted to put it in, we'd be paying them for that land. Why not just have them dedicate the right-of-way? This is not, this is not a huge outlay of expenditures for them to dedicate this. I, I don't see the, I really don't see the risk to the property owner.
I don't, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. They're already putting in the sidewalk, so they're meeting the needs of the walkability. You're saying that you want the extra foot?
It doesn't connect.
No, they're connecting it from the parking lot.
To their front sidewalk. They're not going all the way to West Chatham Street. And they're not, probably that's gravel right there, so they're not paving it the rest of the way down to the south.
Oh, I see. So you're saying it's not going all the way? In the picture, it, where does, it, does it stop at the front? It's hard to tell on this drawing. Where does that sidewalk stop?
The proposed sidewalk is, I believe, providing access from the handicap space to the edge of South Dixon and then northward to the front, the front sidewalk that accesses the primary entry to the structure.
So it doesn't go to the sidewalk out that's on West Chatham?
Yeah, it does. According to this drawing, it does.
That's what I'm, that's not what Ms. Robinson said.
It's hard to make it out without the steering wheel.
It's hard to make out.
So I guess I'd ask the applicant.
But it also, you have a gravel driveway and then look to the south. So if we wanted to connect a sidewalk down South Dixon Street, you would not have...
The right-of-way.
We would not have the right-of-way for that portion. We'd be paying for the right-of-way in addition to paying for the sidewalk. I'm actually kind of surprised that we're not requiring them to put a sidewalk along the whole portion. I, I would have thought that our downtown ordinances would demand that, given the fact that we're trying to promote walkability on both sides of the road.
Back to the question earlier, it is just a change of use. So the only, that would be one of the normal requirements were at a more intense development plan, but because it's just a change of use, that particular requirement doesn't apply in this case. It's just the dedication of right-of-way that's applicable.
Okay, because it seems like it did apply when it was on Dry and Harrison? Is that what it was? Dry and Harrison? Where that brick house converted over and they added the commercial kitchen, and they put the brick sidewalk around their frontage? That's, that's going back into ancient history, so I mean, maybe, you know, I shouldn't even be bringing that up.
I remember the proposal, I don't remember the details.
Yeah, yeah. So I just contend, the parking is a totally reasonable request. I think it's totally reasonable of us to ask that the right-of-way be dedicated on both sides of the property.
So the parking will remain gravel except for the area right by the handicap spot?
The handicap space will be, I believe, is concrete? Yes.
That's, so the entrance to the, to the parking is gravel? So from, so the dotted portion is gravel, and then there's no sidewalk below it? Is that right?
Down here.
I just wanted to make sure I understand what Ms. Robinson said.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so I'm kind of torn. I understand your, your comments. It is a repurposing. I think I would be happy if that four-foot sidewalk would go up to West Chatham Street and, and then I would be okay. That would carry me through...
Mr. Mayor, I believe my, Mr. Woods has information on that.
Oh, please, yeah.
Mr. Woods, based upon the shown improvements on the site plan with the four-foot additional handicap accessible sidewalk, will that tie into the existing sidewalk on Chatham Street?
Correct. It will tie, it will tie into the, where the sidewalk right now stops.
Oh, it already will.
To the north, but not to the south. There's not, it doesn't run to the south of the property.
Currently, the existing, well, pavement surface for Chatham Street basically kind of stops and terminates where the walkway is to the front door right there.
So let me ask a question about, I'm just curious about liability. If someone were walking on that sidewalk and they were to fall down, and it's a public right-of-way, is the property owner liable in that situation because it's a public right-of-way?
Good question. Would anyone in our transportation police department...
The lawyers got quiet.
I believe I'll let Lisa Glover.
She's like, thanks, thanks a lot, Rob.
I think the town would have the least liability if this remains a private sidewalk and there is no dedication at this point. So once it gets into public right-of-way, it's really not their property to be responsible for anymore, fully. You know, they have some responsibilities, keeping the sidewalks clear and et cetera. So you, you know, things get a little messy once you get public right-of-way and that sort of thing. So if it stays as it is right now, they build a sidewalk, we stay out of it.
Okay. I think it's probably in everybody's best interest, just my opinion, that they dedicate the right-of-way, because it's, I think in the long term, it's going to be better for our community than having a private company owning a private sidewalk that people perceive as a public sidewalk.
I hear everything you're saying, and I really appreciate all the questions, because I haven't, I didn't think about all those. What made me feel more comfortable with the elimination of the right-of-way for this is that, one, it's just a change of use, and they are providing a sidewalk from where people will come to, to where they will go, which is the entrance. And that no matter what, should this be redeveloped, it all goes back through the entire process, and we can get the right-of-way then, based on what I understood. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, whatever development scenario may come forward in the future, the current ordinance, even if it was small in scale, would still have the minimum of the right-of-way dedication requirement, and we would have the same situation reoccur.
So we'd still get it if it were redeveloped and changed?
Yes. I wanted to make a, I wanted to make a clarifying point. We don't know where the right-of-way is right now on Dixon, so when they build that four-foot sidewalk, they may actually be building it in our right-of-way. So staff is going to have to keep investigating this and figuring that out. If it turns out that is town right-of-way to some point between the building and the existing pavement, we'll probably have to execute an encroachment agreement with them for the building of the sidewalk. We'll have to work through those things as we work through it, but I just wanted to kind of make that point. It really is messy at this point, because we don't exactly know where the right-of-way ends.
I like the, the mayor keeps, says, let's think about the worst-case scenario, or the best-case scenario in some, how you look at it. Let's say they are very successful on this corner, and down the street, they want to be some more development, then they will be walking past this down the street without this building being torn down or without a major renovation, and we won't have the right-of-way for that sidewalk to get to the houses past this, and they want to do business, and they want to participate in downtown development, but we don't have the right-of-way, and then we're held, held at bay for this one. I don't see that it hurts to give, I'm willing to give up the dedication on Chatham, because it's already there, the roadway's already there, but I think we need to get the dedication enough to get a sidewalk up to the one foot or whatever we're supposed to get, and, and let's get the dedication of it and let them put the sidewalk in. That's, then, then if businesses want to start down the road, they'll have a way to get there. At least we'll own the, the land to put a sidewalk on.
Other comments, questions? We want to move to motions?
I'll make a motion.
Wait a minute, we got to open the deliberative for that wait. Close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask council for a motion.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve modification requests A, B, and C made by the applicant, as the request meets all the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
A second.
There's a motion and a second.
I too appreciate the comments and the concern. I think if maybe we had plans in the foreseeable future to construct a sidewalk, then I wouldn't have a problem essentially taking the property or the right-of-way. But given that we don't, I, I think that the best time to acquire that is if and when that property ever does redevelop. It may or may not be. It may or may not. I still believe that the best place for the sidewalk is on the other side of the street that's vacant, that will develop, redevelop all the way down to the little gray cinder block, I don't know what you call it, building. I think the request is reasonable. I think, as Lisa has demonstrated, this is kinda messy. We don't even know exactly where the lines are drawn at this time. We might find out half of it's already ours anyway. I, I think if you want to encourage reuse, commerce and, and businesses to come to downtown, that we should be doing what we can to accommodate that. So I, I don't have a problem with what they're proposing.
Ms. Silverstein, I wanna ask a question. I'm, I'm looking at my script and they called for three separate motions, and this is all in one motion? Is that okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Unless someone would, someone would like to separate A, B, or C now, right?
Right, so if this fails, then we'll start picking them apart. Okay.
For the record, I'll be voting against this for the reasons that I stated previously. I also will add that I believe downtown developments demand having sidewalks on both sides of the street versus the suburban model where you put it on one side of the street. And I think that our downtown has gained the momentum that we've been looking for. I don't think it's a matter of trying to entice people to come downtown at this point, so I don't think that we need to worry about anything kind of threatening that, you know, something as small as this, the ROI, the, the right-of-way cost will be almost nothing to them to de, to dedicate it. So I think it has, the only people that we have to lose from this is the, are the citizens of Cary who will have to pay for the right-of-way and the sidewalk going forward, should we not require the right-of-way at this time.
And I'll be, feel the same way, and I think that if we're, if, if we just do planning for the foreseeable future, I think it's short-sighted, because there's things that could happen that we don't foresee, and I think the best case or worst case, like the mayor's pointed out, is that, well, we don't have plans for those few houses down the road, and then Wednesday week, somebody comes in and says, "Hey, I wanna redevelop this house." Well, it was foreseeable future, we didn't know about that, but somebody comes up and says they wanna do it, so I, I think we have to look not for the foreseeable future, we have to look for the possibilities of the future and, and create this kind of urban environment, and I think it, it doesn't hurt to develop it, I don't think it's onerous and there's not, there's minimal cost, and if they find out they don't own it, I mean, that's the right-of-way already, there's nothing, there's nothing lost. And if they do own it, then we won't be able to put a sidewalk there if we, if we wanted to without having to pay for it later, and it just seems to me like we're, we're, we're not, we're not forward-thinking if we don't get the right-of-way on, on Dixon.
Other comments?
In the past, sorry. In the past, when the town, like with the downtown streetscape project, the project that was proposed to be done on Chatham Street, the town went and acquired everybody's right-of-way and everybody was paid for it with the expectations that we would redevelop and, and so forth. To me, this is just a simple change of use. The house doesn't change, the character doesn't change, very, very low impact, so I appreciate the concerns and the con, I really do, and I don't totally disagree with you, but I just think the right time to acquire it's when the property redevelops and you actually get the right sidewalk at that point. You get the nice five, six foot with the utility strip and, and what you want, so...
The only other comment besides all that I've heard is that the property on the other side on Dixon is in an LDR, right? So it's residential, it's not going to have, again, unless it redevelops and comes in with a different zoning, it's not gonna have the sidewalk to go anywhere. The sidewalk's going nowhere, right? So I'm, I mean, I'm the walkability, you know, connection person of late, and I really do agree that the time to do it is when it redevelops, especially since the sidewalk won't go anywhere for any time in the near future. So I, I always support the motion as it is.
I don't see why we say it doesn't go anywhere when people live there and...
There's no sidewalk, there's no likelihood that there's a sidewalk on the LDR side, so it'll just stop after that property.
But we have, we have communities all the time that want to have sidewalks put in place that are residential.
My yard had one put in.
I think when and if it redevelops, it's the time to do it.
Well, we have a regentification of these neighborhoods, we might have, you know, for a long time, we've had families have lived there a long time that may not have had young children, but as new families move in, there may be young children whose parents don't feel safe with them walking on streets that forty years ago were so quiet, it didn't matter if your kids walked on the streets, but now it's getting to be more congested and they may feel like they would want, want to have sidewalks running along South Dixon. So we have to...
And when those, and when those come in and redevelop, rezone and the sidewalks are there...
But they may not redevelop, it may just be houses turning over.
And they're, and they're submitting a sidewalk there, so...
Well, but let's say they do, but let's say they do redevelop and they come in and they wanna put a townhouses in there, imagine that downtown, they wanna put townhouses in, and they put a sidewalk in, and then it goes to nowhere, because we didn't have the foresight to get the right-of-way.
No, if it comes in with a different use, it'll come in with the opportunity for us to do...
Not this one, not this one, the past, the houses past, let's say this one's very successful and stays just like it is.
Townhouse, it's, it's LDR, it would change zoning, it would have a different requirement.
I'm, I'm not being clear. The, the house on the corner, we're talking about the property, it stays just as is, it doesn't get redeveloped, but past it, something gets redeveloped on that street past it, and they put, and they put a sidewalk in, because they have to, because they're redeveloping. And this is gonna come up with this property, and we're gonna say, "Sorry, it stopped and we don't own the right-of-way, we're gonna have to go by the right-of-way to, to finish the sidewalk," and I just, I just, I don't think that's forward-thinking.
Any other comments? We have a motion on the table to do A, B, and C. There's disagreement, so we need a show of hands, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's try them one at a time.
I'll follow up with a motion to approve modification requests A and B.
And tell us what A and B is, so we're all clear.
A is reduce required parking, and B is the right-of-way on Chatham Street.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. How are we feeling about that?
I'll go for that, I would've all along.
You can, you go ahead and do what you need to do, I'm gonna vote against it, sorry.
Other comments? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's five to two approval. We wanna do C for the record, or is that kinda understood?
I'll make a motion that we deny the elimination of right-of-way dedication on South Dixon Avenue for the reasons stated previously.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Silverstein, you're gonna say something?
I think it's surplusage, I don't think it's necessary, since the motion was limited to A and B, but I don't think it harms anything either.
Okay. Other comments?
I'm sorry. I know it's not my turn to speak, but if there's an opportunity to either condition the approval of C, if the council's inclined to see, the problem we have right now is if we dedicate the full amount, that's actually dedicating into the building.
No, we can't, I thought he said...
And so if, 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 if there's an opportunity for us to dedicate the amount necessary to accommodate the sidewalk that we're gonna already be constructing, I think that that is something that we could live with. But to, to deny it outright means that we have to comply with the ordinance requirements, which means dedicating the full right-of-way, which potentially dedicates into the building.
I thought we couldn't dedicate to the building, is what Rob said.
Our policy is to not require dedication where it would go into the foundation of the building, we would stop a foot short. That's, that's how we handle these situations and other cases.
Can I, can I interject here? It seems to me the problem is that you don't have accurate, complete information, and until you get accurate, complete information, you're speculating anyway. So at such point as you obtain accurate, complete information, you could always come back with another modification request, it seems to me.
But it's not, it's gonna go within a foot of the building is all that the maximum would require, which would be a little bit more than the four-foot sidewalk, but I don't, there's disagreement about that?
I think also that the motion could be dedicate the full extent of the right-of-way except for where it would be underneath the foundation.
I will amend my motion to state that, because I believe it reflects either the practice or the policy of the staff.
Okay, so the motion is to...
Is it the one foot, though?
To eliminate the right-of-way dedication on South, excuse me, to deny elimination of the right-of-way dedication on South Dixon Avenue up to one foot of the foundation of the building.
And Ken, were you the second on that?
I, I think what you're doing is you're requiring...
We're requiring, yeah.
So you say you don't wanna use eliminate, I don't think.
So you're approving the, you're approving a modification request?
We are requiring them to dedicate the right-of-way.
Up to?
So restate your motion that way.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion that we require the applicant to dedicate the right-of-way within one foot of the foundation of the property, of the, the structure.
Ken?
I second that.
All right. Ms. Silverstein, how's that motion sound?
I think the motion is fine.
Okay.
I don't know that you've seen the end of this.
I wanna understand what, if we're doing something stupid or something wrong here, I wanna figure out what we're doing.
There are foundation plantings that are adjacent to the house right now, that, that would end up being in the public right-of-way, which I guess is, is fine if you guys wanna...
Well, I have, I have foundation plantings in my yard that are actually within the right-of-way and we still, we still trim them and take care of them like they're on our own property. Nobody's ever come by and taken them out, so I don't, I don't think that's anything unusual.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and discussion.
I think the last bit of discussion kinda illustrates why we probably shouldn't move forward with requiring the right-of-way on Dixon.
What's required, is required right now. The only thing they were asking for was a waiver, so if we do nothing, it's required, period, according to their practices or policies. I, I'm not sure exactly which one it is.
Right, that's why, in my original motion, which is why I included C to, you know, eliminate the dedication.
Right, and I disagree with that wholeheartedly, so if I can do nothing, I can withdraw it and we can do nothing, and we can just let it be the way it is, so I, why don't I...
That would be an option as well.
Okay, well, then I'll just withdraw my motion and we will leave it alone and it'll just go as it would normally.
So there's been the motion withdrawn. Ken, are you in agreement with that, or you wanna make a motion?
If it's gonna go to, if I understand from Lisa, or somebody, if it's gonna go to staff and they're gonna handle it, then Rob, if I...
I think what, what Jennifer's saying, I, I hate to jump in, is if we do nothing, it is required and it goes up to a foot from the foundation, so we're just restating what is already required.
Correct.
So if we do nothing, we've accomplished everything we wanted to accomplish.
Or you could take a motion to decline the requested modification.
So I, I wanna just clarify with Mr. Silverstein, that he believes where we are right now, if nothing else happens, we've approved A and B and essentially by not approving it, we've denied C, and then that leaves staff with their typical practice to work through the applicant on the required right-of-way dedication.
And, okay, and in the interest of cost and not wanting somebody to come back here before us again and take our time up and their time up, I'm wondering if that's, if there's something that, is there a compromise or something that we should do, or is that satisfactory?
That, that's a good question. So is there anything we can do to make it a staff approval, because I think staff has heard what...
Well, so I think that's where we are now with staff approving, the applicant would come in with right-of-way dedication and can, pursuant to their current practices, staff would work with them to dedicate right-of-way up to, was it a foot of the foundation?
And they could still put a sidewalk in even though it was on our property?
Yes, we can work with them through encroachments and other things, or whatever we need to do, we can, we can work through that. And then the applicant, if it turns out for some other reason that really doesn't work, as Mr. Silverstein said, they can come back with a different modification request, once we know the actual extent of the right-of-way.
And if that were to be the case, how long might that process take and prevent the applicant from getting a CO and a tenant from legally operating and, you know?
That would be dependent upon, we'd have to take a look at the council's schedule and determine the availability, you know, for having a subsequent quasi-judicial hearing. We, we would look, it's in development plan review, so it would be a matter of simply identifying what's the earliest date that, who would be possible to bring that back to you on your agenda.
So when, when you talk about what's it actually cost the applicant, doing this in time is costing the applicant?
That's why I'm asking if there's a compromise or something the applicant can live with, so that we don't, they don't have to come back, period, because they can't get this again, we've already voted against it. I think that's the same thing twice, right?
Yeah, I think it's over.
Let me, let me throw this out and see how, how this sounds. If you continued the remainder of this case...
No. Sorry.
She was thinking aloud.
Go ahead and finish your thought.
If, if, if you continued the remainder of this case to a date certain, then if something was resolved prior to that time, it could be withdrawn. If it wasn't resolved, they wouldn't have to file a new application.
That's great, that's the compromise I was looking for.
Then you would be continuing this quasi-judicial hearing.
And the question is, is how much time you would need to do that?
February first is our next tentative quasi-judicial meeting.
Do we think we can...
Will you have the answers? I mean, I think that Mr. Silverstein made an incredibly wise comment about the fact that there's a lot of things that we don't know, that normally we would know by now. The plot, you know, we don't know, the plat map, we don't know where right-of-way is. I mean, normally, I wouldn't expect that we would even be making these QJ decisions without this information already known. Will you know that information by now?
Rob, and mayor, before Rob answers, can I add one thing? I, I think we've heard where you're at and we can work with the applicant and get through this under the normal review process.
Without a quasi-judicial?
I would hope so.
Okay.
Can I just ask for a clarifying point? So if this land is already in the right-of-way, this is a moot point, correct?
That is correct.
If this right-of-way, this land is not in the right-of-way and they are going to dedicate right-of-way within one foot of the structure, they are doing exactly what we think is the right thing to do, or the majority of the council thinks is the right thing to do. So it doesn't really matter if it's in the right-of-way or not in the right-of-way. In the end, they will comply with the right-of-way dedication.
Absent counsel approving a modification request to the contrary, yes.
Thank you. I, I think we're done.
Any other comments or any other motions? If not, we'll close this public hearing, and the other two public hearings were taken away from this agenda, and so that takes us to closed session, and I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to GS 143, 318, 11A, one and three, I move that we have a closed session to consult with attorneys employed by and, and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by 140, GS 143, 318, 10E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes and we are in closed session.